All right, good evening, everybody for our regular scheduled December tenth meeting. Please join me with the feds. Thank you. All right, I know we have some Stony Hill Fire Department here and I believe Fred is on the line. Fred, do you want to add anything in public comment or are you here for support? Fred, if you want to talk, you're muted. All right, we can go back to Fred if he has anything to add.
Do you guys have anything in public comment?
No, great. Correspondence, Mary?
No.
Nothing in correspondence, great. All right, next thing on the agenda is our minutes from our November twelfth meeting. Everybody have a minute to go through those? If someone would like to make a motion, I would accept it.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last, what was it, November?
November twelfth.
Sorry, November twelfth meeting as presented. I'll second your motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second on the minutes. Tire everybody's mind, all in favor, see if they say an aye. All right, and we have one exception? Yep. Great. I'm sorry, Karen, welcome to the board.
We kind of fast moving here and.
If there's anything, I emailed you my phone number.
Yes, I got a new phone and I didn't get it on my case for a while, so I'm sorry, I just.
My kid does that all the time.
If there's any questions, please call.
Absolutely.
Well.
All right, um, okay, consideration of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, Fred, are you there or someone have a comment?
Well, I think I'm here now, I don't have, I don't have any comment, I'm just here if you have questions.
Okay, great, I saw you were there, I just wanted to make sure you don't want to add anything in the public comment there, so.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so consideration of the minutes, as everybody knows, and most of us know, we have to.
Well, the meeting, the meeting schedule.
The next year's meeting schedule, I'm sorry, yeah. So the only thing Mary took the liberty to print us out is November eleventh is Veterans Day of next year. She did come up with some alternates. It's not that we can skip a whole week because the selectmen is the next week on Tuesdays, so. We can let it ride or we can do the third, the first Wednesday or the third Wednesday of November, which would be the fifth or the nineteenth. So I don't care either way, we can always change it when we get there, it's a whole year, my life's a wreck, I never know.
Is it Election Day, one of those?
It's Veterans Day.
Right, but if we back up to the fifth, isn't that election day?
Uh, no, that's Tuesday with the.
Yeah, it is Tuesday, yeah, good catch, it's close, right, exactly. We're going to a Wednesday.
Just because we can't usually come on a Tuesday, you know, with the.
Or a Monday.
Or a Monday, right, right.
So. I'm okay with letting it ride, but I'm just thinking if there's a veteran that might think, oh, I can't believe they scheduled a meeting.
And I'd rather change it now because it's a good catch.
Well, I think you can do it, because the building's closed.
And the building's closed.
No, 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 Nick said there was one option, just make a motion to accept this schedule and then, but somebody would see it and say, geez, I can't believe they didn't consider Veterans Day and.
And the building is, is closed, Brad, so. So do you want to make a motion, just make it the nineteenth?
Is that what everybody's consensus is, eighth works better?
We have to change it, we'll change it, right?
Take Thanksgiving.
The nineteenth would be the twenty, uh, the twenty-seventh is Thanksgiving.
You're fine.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the document that gives us our twenty twenty-five regular meeting with one correction. We're going to move our November eleventh meeting to make that November nineteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Is Fred just talking to family?
Yeah.
Um, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, all right, so any other questions or comments on the meeting minute?
The meeting schedule of next year.
Ever sing the same aye?
Aye.
Next thing is Stony Hill is here and I know Chief Baker's here, like, give us a presentation on this.
I guess, I'm sorry.
Before you, you have a handout in front of you. I didn't think to do it before Mary sent out the invite, but I updated the C N R list, which I try to get to the board whenever you have anything C N R in front of you. And this is before any other changes that we might do later.
Yeah, allocate and unallocate.
Great.
Okay, good evening, everyone, as you know, we have a new ladder truck up in Stony Hill. And it is going to be in service after we get some training done and we've been working diligently to get it outfitted, all of the equipment. And we were tasked with trying to get it equipped with equipment that we already own, whether it was in-house equipment, whether it was. Equipment from an engine that we recently sold off, which was the eighty-three Pierce engine, which was at the time considered a reserved piece. So that never had a set of portable radios assigned to it. So we were able to take the hose off of the nozzles, the appliances, all of the, the hand tools, the mobile radio and all of those equipment, but it did not have portable radios on it to move to Truck Four. So what we did to try and reduce the cost was we took some of the portable, and if you remember, we had petitioned the town to buy new portable radios, both Stony Hill and Bethel. And we spent a large amount of money, I believe it was about seventy-two new portable radios for both departments. And the reason this, they're much safer, the radios that we're using were old and obsolete. So we had them on some of the support vehicles, so the utility truck, yes, it does calls, it goes to brush fires, it goes to fire police and it's used for bringing manpower if they didn't make the truck. So to have radios on it, it is necessary, and the expedition as well. So there was more, the new ladder truck has six seats. So the two from the utility, the two from the expedition were relocated to the ladder truck. But we still have two seats without radios at all, that's where the number of two comes from.
So you don't anticipate any of the contingency.
How much was the contingency money on that truck?
We were, we put back the radios that we took out of service, put them back into those two vehicles that I talked about, the utility and the expedition. I'd say it was a twenty thousand?
I don't know.
And you burned it up by some wiring and stuff like that?
Yep.
Different lighting.
But I don't have the newer safer radios, a complete set to put on that, so I was looking for two more.
And I think none of the contingency was for the actual fire truck, I think it was for the outfitting done locally by Firematic. The radios that John referenced before was approved out of C N R in January of twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
But Brad, you, you just said a number of one point seven something.
It was like four hundred thousand.
Well, that was the price of the truck, was one million seven oh six. Four hundred thousand, exactly, nice memory.
But the voters voted to spend up to one point eight, is that correct?
Things I remember like that.
So again, this had the special, I get a hell of a bunch of things to keep everybody safer, if I remember.
But the, yeah, but the, yeah, so the number's been.
So I thought the contingency was the difference between one million.
And that's why it was such important to get that upgrade correct.
Can I ask a question? No, no, no.
Okay.
So the fire truck is pretty much, I know it's that Firematic getting outfitted.
In the invoice, that guy Jeff, I think his name was Jeff, he carried certain money in case they needed something extra, it's contingency.
No, it's actually Fire Department.
Is that the Fire Department now? All right, so it's completely done?
That was built into the.
Yes, I mean, we still have training to go, but as far as outfitting it with equipment, it's.
Into one point seven oh six or whatever.
Okay, um, not to go off into a thing, but you know, we bought some battery stuff, some rescue battery tools, did that get put in this truck?
When did we know if there's going to be any contingency, because I know there's part of it, there was some contingency in the million, the one million seven oh six.
Oh, as far as what? That's in the rescue truck.
Like Firematic had contingency, or is that going to be?
It's in the rescue truck, but I thought, is this ladder going to be the first truck out or something?
We haven't gotten a final number yet, to know.
So there could be.
We have a, um, a very structured response plan on depending on what type of a call it is, what type, so. It could be.
My guess is it's probably not.
We didn't.
It's outfitting.
I mean, that was what we were looking to do was to make sure that we spent all of that money because of any changes or upgrades that we wanted to do, things that we wanted. We put the rescue tools on the, you know, the extrication battery tools on the rescue, that's going to be first to up onto the highway. One of the things that was brought up at the fire commission meeting was, are you going to be taking this, you know, one point seven eight million dollar ladder truck up onto the highway? Because just prior to that meeting where it was discussed, a ladder truck was destroyed on the highway because it was hit. And it was like, whoa, is that going to happen? I said, that is not our plan to send it up on the highway, obviously, we do send another truck up as a blocker and that is its purpose, to, to make sure that the responders and anybody that is on scene stays safe, but it wouldn't be.
So depending on the call, you know what it is, so that ladder really won't be first if it's a certain call.
That's what we're trying to do is make sure that the apparatus is set up and has the equipment to do the specific job. For instance, the, um, the pumper tanker being a tanker, we didn't take off the equipment on it that it would need to refill and to, you know, so.
I saw some pictures and it looked like there was some hydraulic stuff in there and.
Right, as a backup.
Yeah, yeah, I got it, no, no, you're going to use it, right.
Right, so if the rescue goes out for service and.
Can't use it in the garage, you got to take it with you.
Got you, so. I know Bob would like to make a motion, just to get John out of, out of the minutes anyway.
Any other questions?
Um, well, let's make a motion then we can.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the board of selectmen to approve sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents of the capital non-recurring for two portable radios for Truck Four.
And Karen, would you like to?
Would I like to ask a question?
Do you have any candy or would you like to second that motion? We go over Robert's rules of order here, so when someone makes a motion, we need a second, so I'm asking for a second.
I would be happy to second that.
This is going to be perfect, so.
Now is there?
I'm sorry, yeah, so you can second it, we have, any other discussion on this, on the radios?
I just have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, when you say portable radios, that's not like a walkie-talkie thing, right? I mean, that's a lot of money.
It is. It costs that much for a radio.
It's crazy, right?
It is crazy.
It's crazy.
Yeah, technology is the price of technology, but to give you some of the, the great features that it does have is, it's what they call a dual-band radio, where you have both like a U H F frequency and, and a V H F frequency. So we can actually talk to them mutually, we have, and it's got so much memory in it, we have a lot of channels, so just about any town, and again, regardless of what frequency they have, we can talk to them in this area, almost anything up to about South Bay, we have all of them.
That's cool, I wondered.
The biggest, uh, safety factor was the old radios had a very small button, maybe the size of a eraser, a pencil eraser, for you to try and push when you have a mayday situation. And to do that with a gloved hand was virtually impossible, so, and it was only on the radio, and if you had the radio under your, your gear and your coat to keep that radio safe, it wasn't going to happen. Now it's on the mic and it's, it's three times the size of it, like the, the size of your glove thumb.
That's a dumb question. So this is a radio that all the firefighters would wear, right?
Correct, and that's why we want to have.
So it's rated to go in for firefighting. Is, since it's a truck one, would it make more sense for ones in the truck to not be the?
They'd take it with them from the truck and sit in the seat.
Okay.
Correct, we don't have enough to issue to every firefighter that joins, so as they get into the truck, their air path will be there for them, the radio will be there for them, their flashlight will be there for them.
So it's whoever's on that call all the time, that's that radio.
Correct, and, and the radio is assigned to that position, so if they have a mayday, we know who's sitting in what position, so if it's the engine one officer or engine one seat two.
Yeah, I understood that, I just didn't know if it sat in the truck all the time, it didn't necessarily need to be the one rated to go and fight a fire.
With the special mic and all that.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the radios, portable radios? Tire everybody's mind, everybody in favor? Everybody good? Good, great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, hey, free guys, go, you know, we love to go on field trips because we like to get out of this room, we would love to go up and see that truck if we were invited, if we are invited, I mean, we don't want to go if we're not invited.
You're absolutely invited anytime, we'll make sure.
Maybe you can set up a time and date and it text me and we'd love, love to go up and take a look at it. All right, thanks for your service, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nick wants one of those plastic cats, too.
I don't want the pink one, thanks, man.
All right, um, so Mary brought this, I think she made a mistake, but I'm not going to call her out, but there was, there was an ask for a board of ed from the board of selectmen. Um, do we need to change this in the agenda or just make our motion?
You can just make the motion.
Yeah.
We put the dollar amount on the agenda, so it's more visible, the board of finance can do whatever they want, but.
Exactly, so. Yep, and again, um, Brad, you were at this meeting, right?
I was not at this meeting.
You were not at this meeting.
You think a bat there would happen to my watch, Nick?
Right, you, 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 you catch Mary's mistake, I'm well, I'm sorry.
So, but if, if I remember, this was two or three items, right, Mary, Mary, you were there.
It's right here, it's fixing a leak for the hot water on the first floor of the Bethel High School, Middle School. It's fixing the elevators that we looked at tonight to get them compliant with the switching.
There's switching problems, right.
And then just a measly thousand dollars to fix a generator at the Berry School.
I thought the Berry School is twenty, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Well, the board of selectmen made a recommendation, or I'm sorry, their ask is for a thousand dollars for the Berry School.
A quick question, the leak, is that covered by any insurance claim?
It would be below the minimum anyway.
It is deductible.
Deductible, it's like twenty-five, I think now, it used to be ten, but karma bumped it up to twenty-five, um, so. Now.
Are we at the beginning of the year or the end of the year?
It's per incident.
Per incident, what a ripoff.
So on D one, the, the, the dollar amount that the highlighted are the actual asks.
Yeah, right. So you want me to?
Uh, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we take out of the C N R account thirteen thousand seventy-five dollars from our C N R account to make several repairs to the school systems, as noted in document dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty, from Dr. Carver. Or I'm sorry, yes, from Dr. Carver, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
A seconded motion.
All right, so, um, this is good, I mean, this is, there's some issues with the four sixty account and each year, they always say they never have enough money, they never have enough money. Well, this year, and you guys got an email with the, they're, they really, besides everything is paid, they really don't have much money left. Um, I think it's twelve hundred bucks, I believe, there on the bottom of the page. So we did meet, um, we're going to talk about them, it, it's only, everything is paid for up to this point, the waxing of floors, the cleaning, the, the, you know, whatever else is on their list, um, as you see on the top. But there's going to be some four sixty account, um, efficiencies, and that's what these three things are here now, so. Oh, I don't think anybody's going to be surprised by it, but I was surprised, there's seven more months of this budget that we're working on and they actually don't have enough. Now, they, if you remember, everybody that was on the board, they did do a presentation and they were saying that a five-year average, they really need six hundred twenty-five thousand in four sixty account to, to make up for a five-year average. And it's never enough, you know, we give them four fifty, last year, we gave them five twenty-six, and that was a big increase, Bob, if you remember, um, but it's still not enough. And this year, there happened to be a lot of breakdowns, um, that, that are eating at that number on the four sixty count, so I just wanted to make it public, I think I sent out a text and, and some backup for that, I see Bobby, you have it. Um, we're just going to keep an eye on it, you know, this is a trust thing with the board of ed and when something goes wrong, we have to take care of our buildings and, and I think most of us have supported that, so I just wanted to, to mention that in this kind of ask here, so, okay. So is any other questions?
Yeah, I, I've got a question, it's not so much as to just this item, I think it's maybe more a procedural thing. This, in, in some ways, this reminds me of what happened last year with Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Right, they, they had a budget, not too far into that budget year, they realized that they were close to full budget. I just wondered to what degree, and it sounds like maybe we're going to do this, but would it be helpful for us to do in connection with the four sixty account, the same thing we did with the Park and Rec folks, which is kind of really kind of understand what their processes? Because these are, we just started to get to be really big numbers and we're going to have to work that, my thing, into our capital model recurring budget, which it, we know is already overspent, uh, a dozen times, right? Meaning that there are many more items on that list that we have unallocated for. And so, just like anybody who might manages their own personal household budget, this to me seems like one of those things where we might be helped by sitting down with, with the board of ed folks and figuring out what is this? Could, could it be that they were just really unlucky, right, everything hit at once and just, they just had a bad year, right? Or is this more a systematic kind where we can start planning and, and building it into our overall capital model recurring with a kind of a more calm, a more frequent back and forth communication with the board?
I agree, and, and we did have a meeting last week, um, and it is an unlucky year, uh, it seems to be, there's a lot of repairs and it seems like their repairs, there is some wants in there, Brad, you know, there's some cabling issues in cat five or six.
But wasn't there one big item that blew that four sixty apart?
And I asked that question because.
It really wasn't when they gave.
I thought there was a big.
No.
Crazy boiler or something that.
Just to get everybody up, as the chair, you know, some of the stuff comes to me and they were giving me examples and I said, okay, well, what broke? What, what sent you over with seven months left to go? And Jen had said, well, there was an air handler. I said, okay, great, so we're, I knew we were going to meet, that's what we met last week, and I kept looking, where's the air handler? And, well, no, that wasn't, that was just part of it, you know, I was hoping there was a hundred thousand dollar repair that should have been on a capitalist, I think we had that conversation, and there isn't. Was there, what was, was there a fifty thousand? No, if you go through the list and I sent you an email, I mean, there's, there's twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand, eighteen thousand, and they all add up after they paid on the top column all their obligations, you know, their cleaning contracts and all that, so.
But yeah, I think that should be pointed out, of the like four hundred or five hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in their budget, like three fifty to four hundred are contracted services.
There's no change in it.
So it's not like they had five hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs that they normally have and they have more, their repair line's usually like a hundred and twenty-five. So it, you know, like, which is a lot of money, but like, it can go quick if you have a bad year of a bunch of ten and fifteen thousand dollar issues. So, but it does get a little, because it's all one line for the board of finance, we used to break it out with contracted services, repairs, um, and like, eight years ago or whatever, I made it one line or substantially one line, because they just moved the money between them anyway. And when they proposed their budget, like with the four fifty, they tell you what the breakdown is between contracted repairs and capital repair and capital improvements. Um, but we keep it all in line so they, in one line, so they can manage it. So they do give us a breakdown at budget time.
So, but, so I want to go to, Bob, your statement was, we don't want to make sure we don't do what we did with the Park and Rec, but don't we consider it something, those were town services where these are just bad days, right? I mean, so it's hard to say, you know, oh, hey, you're going over budget, the Park and Rec was going over budget because they were adding services, they didn't know what the expenses were, right? I mean, so I consider it two different things, and I mean, we can't stop here.
They had three, they had three kids with the basketball game and they cut it down to two.
Oh, I know, they're programs for costing too much.
I take your point, John, I think it's not, while it may be a different driver, I'm, I'm not sure, I think it's different from the standpoint of what we need to do. Meaning Park and Rec, yeah, they kind of just lost track of what was going on, they offered too many programs, they were thinking what the cost would be, they, they really just needed to sharpen their pencil and do a better job budgeting. I wondered to some degree, maybe that's what this is, right? To Nick's opening point, their average over the last five years has been six hundred.
Six forty.
Six forty, and we've been giving less than that, so do we need to think?
Oh.
Like many years.
Funding it more.
Yeah, like many years ago, right, capital non-recurring was two twenty-five, and every year, we were spending like a million dollars in other stuff.
Yeah, on the credit cards.
On the short-term debt, and they're like, all right, well, you know, maybe we should just do what they need if that's their annual run, the true annual run. To Nick's point, maybe this is just, you know, everyone has a, a bad year, right, households have bad years.
Well, they just give it an average of five years in the six range where we're only funding it for something and we're having a hard time dealing with four fifty, right?
Right.
Thank God that the selectmen had some money, where did that come from?
He gave an extra hundred, we gave five twenty-six, he gave an extra hundred, we thought we were catching up, but they were doing some carpet and this and that, but, you know, they're probably something more important, but you can't, it's okay, when's that clock going to break? And that's kind of what this list is happening, you know, so.
And after I thought about it a little bit more, like initially when I heard about this, I'm like, man, I can't believe we're just hearing about it. But I guess we really, we really are only five months, this is November thirty.
Yeah.
We're only five months into the year and they're, they're putting their hand up saying, we may need some help, and that's when I started to think, well, maybe it is just like Park and Rec, we need to kind of sit with them, hear more about what their situation is so that we can then maybe sharpen our pencil on the budget side.
And I think some of it, sorry to jump in, is, this conversation's been happening about the four sixty account for two months now. And it was.
But we didn't.
On a watch, on a watch, and then it, you know, so that's why when, like Dan and I were talking a month ago about what the board of selectmen can still do with the ARPAP money. And one of the conversations that, well, the board of meds have been talking about their four sixty problem for a while, let's talk to them about, bring us a list, because maybe there's stuff on that list that the ARPAP money can do, and they, that's when they approved eighty-five thousand of this list. And I think some of this stuff that, they took, compared to the top stuff, which is almost the safety issues, and left the repair stuff more as the C N R from a, that's more maintenance than.
Right. You know, we did, we did have conversation with Dr. Carver and, and we have great conversations and Brad and the testers, they were in years past, that if they needed something, right? It was four fifty forever, right, the four sixty was four fifty forever, what they, what they were doing is they were going into their four fifty account and buying some repairs. Now, that offended me a little bit because the four fifty is supposed to be teaching our kids, and that's what was happening, you know what I mean? Um, but when they come in at a two point nine percent increase, the teachers are getting that salary increase in their unit contract, there's really nothing left, and that's what kind of made this problem come to the surface a little faster.
And they, just like the town took on the E C S money after we set our budget, the state bought us like two hundred grand, they immediately took a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar hit in the special, the special edge access cost. And if they, the state fully funded, it's really like a six hundred thousand dollar difference, but they didn't think that, what they kind of figured they were get, and then what the state set their budget at, they took a two hundred thousand dollar hit immediately in their four fifty account. So I think that's between coming in at two nine nine, what the state did, and it being a bad year, it's kind of a side of events, you know, that's kind of.
So maybe, maybe I just laid us down a path that we necessarily need to go down even further because we started the process.
We sort, we, we set the trap and they walk right through.
But what, but what if we, so the four sixty account should be exactly what it is, maintenance, what, so everything they're spending on, you know, they spent all that money, right? But were there, was there any bona fide capital improvements that we should have said, hey, you're only going to get four fifty every year and our C N R account is to do capital improvements, right?
So we, we talked about what is capital and what is maintenance, and I think that's a blurry line and we're going to try to straighten it out a little bit. Um, you know, and I'm not, I don't think I'm in favor to say, okay, listen, let's give them six fifty.
Right, that's what I mean, if you kept the maintenance, yeah.
But it's, it's, it's about a, a communication and trust thing, if we give them the money, right, there's three twenty-five and regular cleaning, give my extra hundred, hundred fifty to, to take care of some things, but then they have to know that they can come to us, you know what I mean? And we, you know, I don't want to raise everybody's mill rate by so much and they didn't really need it, you know what I mean, we want to have the, the right budget. So we always do have some extra money during the year that maybe we get caught up on some things, but it, it goes to trust, guys, I mean, that's really what.
It goes to trust, if it's a justifiable expense to pay, but I want to see it justified, I'm like, you're pretty, you're a check here.
And one of the things that came up at the meeting last week was, uh, Dr. Carver always assumed that they should only put anything on the capital plan if it's over fifty grand, which I think that's what she was told when she started, and that's the way she's operated for the last ten years. But really, some of this stuff, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, probably should be on their capital plan at some point, to Bob's point, that you know it's coming from C N R, instead of them using their four sixty account.
Yeah.
For capital improvements, maybe some of that stuff that they think is smaller and under fifty grand should be on their capital plan and then we could fund, we know it's coming for C N R issues.
Okay, was there an example in the last five months out of a hundred and something that I can imagine that wasn't contractual obligation that they spent?
I think they had like a twenty-two thousand dollar improvement for I T infrastructure stuff, they had to re-cable something.
Um, not done yet, but, you know, and you asked, you couldn't wait till next July.
Yeah, so I think there's some of those things that could have been done, there's some issues where.
You go off a couple of big numbers, just, just a couple of big numbers in the middle of the column.
Well, I think to the discussion, John, there was the one big of the non-service contract item, so the, there's the cat five testing, which is the wiring for twenty-four thousand.
So we always do have some extra money during the year that maybe we get caught up on some things. But it goes to trust, guys. I mean, that's really what.
It goes to trust if it's a justifiable expense to pay, but I want to see justified.
I'm really pretty well checked here. And one of the things that came up at the meeting last week was, uh, Dr. Carver always assumed that they should only put anything on the capital plan if it's over fifty grand, which I think that's what she was told when she started and that's the way she's operated for the last ten years. But really, some of this stuff, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, probably should be on their capital plan at some point. To Bob's point, that you know it's coming from C N R. Instead of them using their four sixty account.
Yeah.
For capital improvements, maybe some of that stuff that they think is smaller than under fifty grand should be on their capital plan and then we could fund, we know it's coming for C N R issues.
Okay, was there an example in the last five months out of a hundred and something that I can imagine that wasn't contractual obligation that they spent?
I think they had like a twenty two thousand dollar improvement for I T infrastructure stuff. They had to re-cable something.
Cable, yeah. Um, not done yet, but, you know, and you asked, you couldn't wait till next July.
Yeah, so I think there's some of those things that could have been done. There's some issues where.
You go off couple of big numbers, just just a couple of big numbers in the middle of the column.
Well, I think to the discussion, John, uh, there was the one big of the non-service contract item. So the, yeah, yeah, um, there's the CAT five testing, which is the wiring for twenty four thousand around. And much of the other stuff is up, there's eleven thousand for electrical repairs. There's another twelve thousand for electrical panel at the high school. And then just a number of smaller items, three thousand, five thousand, two thousand.
Which sounds like maintenance stuff.
And when I was speaking to Jen before she made that list for that meeting, I think it was over a hundred P O's. And she goes, does, is Nick gonna want all a hundred P O's? I was like, no, do the big ones and then summarize. So that eleven thousand for electrical could be.
You're talking about a work order P O, is that what she's talking about?
I think actual P O is the vendors.
Yeah, yeah.
So so some of it was summarized into, you know, like, you don't need to see a five hundred dollar.
Absolutely.
You know, but so that eleven could be twelve different payments than.
To your point, you do it very quick.
Yeah.
Eyeballing, uh, it's twenty seven items that come up to a hundred twenty six thousand.
After the three fifty of her fixed loss, you know what I mean? We're not talking about a lot of money, but again.
Individually.
Right, yeah. But now it may be higher, but she had a five year chart that it showed it should be in the six and a quarter range, you know, six forty or.
Well, we just did a tour of a couple of the schools and I could, I could see that the schools are gonna need some work. We need to stand behind our buildings.
But it should be out of C N R, not out of her.
Absolutely.
Maintenance account, you know what I mean?
So if I, if I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding where I think we're ending up. We're going, you all are gonna kind of review with the board of that, the definition of capital versus expense.
Yes.
And then think about the right classification and whether or not, oh, what might be the appropriate funding of the four sixty going forward?
And it it's always nice to to add money, but if if we six hundred, it's gonna jump off the page and we're not raising people's taxes. But I, what what most of this conversation is that we're gonna treat it issue by issue. And and she said she's not gonna come run to us for every little thing, but if if something breaks, we have to fix it, you know, and I, as a town, we do, you know what I mean, right?
And maybe it's a, it's a gradual.
Right.
Then you eventually get where we want to be, but like your household, we often can't do it all in one year.
Exactly, baby steps, exactly. All right, so I think we had a motion and a second for the thirteen thousand seventy five dollars. I'll try everybody's mind for those repairs for the school system. All in favor, is anyone saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show you now, yes. Um, okay, um, approval for year end transfers. Brad, do you want to just go over it first?
Yeah, so the, uh, uh, so we're getting to the point that we're getting close to the end of the audit. Um, fortunately, we did file an extension through January thirty first. Um, there's still a chance we're done by December thirty first. They are frankly waiting on some stuff from the board still.
I'm sorry, from you?
No, from the Board of Education. That we've had some conversations, which are conversations I've had with them in the past, but I want to talk to circle back to them. The auditors really need everything by eleven one. Um, which they got from one side and not the other. Um, so some of it is the orders don't, they don't have it as much time as they should have because they have too many clients to make money. I get all that. Still frustrating because I don't want to be working on the budget and the and report at the same time. So there's, they were out last week, uh, last Thursday, which was nice because it's their long day, so they were here all day. Um, pulling a lot of testing, some of our, the town stuff, and then the afternoon they spent with the board. Um, the town side, like I said, is close. They're still tying up some stuff on the board side. Um, and, uh, one of the conversations I had with them getting into the year end transfers is I asked them, I'm like, right now it looks like worth three hundred, we're three hundred ninety one thousand dollars. Um, that on the expense side was under budget. So we came under budget by three hundred ninety one, six seventy nine. Um, one of the conversations I had with them, is there anything that's been sitting on our balance sheet for a while? That at some point, you're not gonna be sitting happy that it's sitting on our balance. Um, what he had mentioned is the paramedic fund. So the paramedic fund, if the board of finance does not approve any additional transfers into it and just lets the three ninety one fall to the fund balance, at six thirty twenty four, we'll owe the town five hundred and fifty seven thousand, five oh nine. Uh, at the end of twenty three, it was four hundred and twenty five thousand, three forty seven. So the paramedic fund on top of the three hundred thousand that the board funded it um, cost the town and well, it's a separate fund, cost an additional hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. So why that is, so New Vance for twenty four, after we'd set the budget, greatly increased the fees based on what they were losing because during COVID, to keep their paramedics, they had to greatly increase their wages. So they lost over a hundred grand, I think in twenty two. In twenty three, it was over a hundred grand and in twenty four, they increased their rates to make up for some of it. I think to try to get to the point of break. Um, and then if you remember when we set the twenty five budget, my initial request was gonna go from a three hundred thousand dollar funding of the paramedic fund to, um, four fifty, and then the board of selectmen agreed to chip in seventy five thousand dollars from ARPA, so the request in this budget year was three seventy five.
But we raised our.
Yeah, so the town went up to three seventy five, seventy five came in from ARPA, so for twenty five, we're in a hole. It's been funded at four fifty, and if the same expenses hit, instead of losing a hundred and thirty two, we'd be to the good eighteen. I know the rate went up some again, not as drastically, I don't think, for twenty five for the paramedic. Um, but we kind of fixed, hopefully fixed, that whole rowing larger going forward. Assuming for the twenty six budget, we need to move at least to the four fifty, maybe higher. Um, all that's a long-winded say to say, long-winded way to say. I think of the three hundred ninety thousand, ninety one thousand dollars that we had left at the end of twenty four, I'm recommending that we fund the paramedic fund an additional two hundred thousand dollars. So pretty much reducing the I O U from five fifty seven, five oh nine down to three fifty seven, five oh nine, which is still a hole. Um, Nick and I had conversations and Dan and I had conversations about would it make sense to do the whole three seventy five? I go, I think it's one of those things, when we get an opportunity, you take a whack at it to get it lower. I don't know if that's gonna be in twenty five because of our utility problem. But in years that we have funds left over at the end of the year, if there's an outstanding balance, we get it lower, get it lower, get it lower and eventually get gone with the knowledge that we have to fund it appropriately for the year. Um, so my recommendation is to fund the paramedic fund an additional two hundred thousand and take a hundred and seventy five thousand and put it in the C N R because we know we have capital issues. Um, instead of letting it fall out the fund balance, which is healthy. If we put it in C N R, it gives the board of finance more control over it without having to bear the expense of doing a town meeting to use fund balance sitting in C N R. And that's still at sixteen thousand, six seventy nine that falls out the fund balance.
Um, just for the newer members, the the paramedic service, the ambulance goes out of the firehouse and you have these lasers or whatever we have, and that's a, that's a paramedic, that's real life saving. And they go out and we do bill for it, but the cost to have the service is so much more than what we collect in billing. So it's the white vehicle that says EMS and they run back and forth from New, not Newtown, but from Redding.
Yeah, we run an intercept program, right? So the paramedic intercepts wherever the ambulance is. Um, and roughly from the billing, we we bring in a hundred thousand dollars. So between the three hundred thousand the board of finance gave them in twenty four, the hundred thousand we billed or received and revenue, because you don't get everything you bill. Uh, you get a fraction of it because anybody that has Medicare, they pay barely anything for some of the stuff. Um, and it's still lost a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars.
But it's a town service that I think is very important. You know what I mean? So even if it costs us a half a million, they, you know.
I couldn't imagine rolling up to a heart attack, you know.
Correct.
Something like that, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm on the show, I was following the number. So I see the three ninety one, six seventy nine.
Yeah.
Uh, the suggestion is that two hundred of that go to paramedic?
Yes.
And then what was?
So one seventy, one seventy five, the C N R.
It takes some change on there, so when he filters out.
Yeah.
The sixteen thousand.
Thank you, I just wasn't following that.
So I think, I think that was a good explanation. I'll make a motion and then we'll see if it. I like to make a motion that we take the year end transfers and we take the amount of two hundred thousand dollars and put it into the America, I'm sorry, the paramedic fund. And then take an additional hundred and seventy five out of year end transfers, hundred and seventy five thousand and add that to our C N R account. C N R. That's a motion.
So in, so in essence, just to explain it, so, oh, you need a second.
I'll second the motion.
So four twenty four, the town approved three hundred thousand for paramedic. So in essence, you're allowing me to fund that at five hundred thousand. And for C N R for the same year, the budget called for six fifty, you're allowing me to fund that to eight twenty five. So in essence, that's what I'm doing. I'm overfunding those lines.
Through that motion, right?
Through that motion.
Why doesn't that add up to three ninety one?
It adds up to three seventy five, leaving the sixteen, six seventy nine.
Oh, okay.
So it's this town, so there's still a little, we didn't spend every dollar that we could.
Okay, okay, I see this. Okay.
Yeah.
So where does that go?
That will fall out the fund balance.
Okay.
So anything not spent will fall to the fund balance.
Okay.
Without any, any of us.
The other side that the board doesn't vote on because the board of finance has much more control over the expense side than the revenue side at this point. Um, we're gonna talk about another piece in a second. Well, let's finish this and then we'll talk about it when we do the capital sales.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. I think everybody knows, uh, you know, what what's going on here, so. All right, um, I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor, if you have a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Record show you now, yes. All right, uh, so now we're on consideration of the revenue, the moving the revenue to C N R. Brad, you want to jump in that one?
So, um, the town vessel sold two of the, uh, F J Clark properties in fiscal year twenty four. Um, those two sales, uh, total one million, one hundred and sixty one thousand, six sixty, so one million, one six one, six sixty. Uh, when I was talking to the auditor about the revenue side of the budget, um, we were roughly five million dollars collected in revenue over what was budgeted. Um, one point one six of that was the sale of the properties, roughly one point, I can tell you exactly what it was here. Um, shouldn't have said I had it open and then, you know, made it look like I got it quicker than I did. Um, uh, it doesn't, so they, we also uh, had interest revenue of one million, nine ninety versus a budget of five seventy nine. So interest, we made one point four million dollars more than we budgeted. And we got one million dollars more in state miscellaneous revenue, which was two pieces, the miniscule revenue sharing grant, which typically we didn't get anything for because there's no money. The state sent us over five hundred thousand dollars. And the motor vehicle tax, uh, twenty four is the last year that Bethel got anything that was five hundred thousand. Both of those things we did not budget for. Um, I know we've been over, but we have a couple new members, so I'll explain why. The motor vehicle, the town of Bethel had always set our mill rate for motor vehicle below what the state set our minimum at. So I didn't know if at some point they were gonna go, oh, Bethel doesn't really need that. They set the motor vehicle lower, but they sent it to us anyway. Um, and the other piece, they always say we're gonna get that miniscule revenue sharing. And then there's just no money, so they don't send it to us. So instead of creating revenue holes, I approached it as if we get it, great, it'll be money that can go into fund balance that we can use for other things. Um, so that's why it was such a good revenue year. Taxes came in because we budgeted at ninety eight, just under ninety nine, um, and we came in over ninety nine, so taxes came in a little over. Um, but that was roughly a million dollars. Um, so but you can't, if you budget ninety nine, five or whatever we came in at, if you miss, we're in a bad shape, so. Um, so in all, even with, if the board decides to take the sale of the cap- capital pro- those two properties and have them go to C N R, the revenue would still exceed the budget by three million, eight ninety two. Um, so speaking to the auditor about these properties, he goes, most towns, when they sell anything, has that money go into a capital account for buying other assets that they need? Uh, this is what we've done whenever we've auctioned any, um, like an old fire truck, it's always gone into the C N R account. Those were always five, ten, fifteen grand. It really didn't make a big dent. He was surprised that we were taking this money to the general fund. Um, in essence, we were gonna take it to the general fund and then turn around and use it for capital projects. Um, like the H VAC for the schools. But to do that, again, you'd have to use, you gotta have town meetings. The H VAC was approved through a town meeting and a referendum, so that's a little different. It just gives, having it in C N R instead of fund balance just gives the boards, selectmen and board of finance, because usually both approve it, even though board of finance is fine, they'll say, a little more control over it without bearing the cost of a town meeting and everything else. So his suggestion was moving the one million, one sixty one, six sixty into the C N R account and taking it out of the fund balance. And it, and he did say, cause Bethel has a healthy fund balance, you don't need it in your fund balance.
Right.
At the end of the day, when we talked about how we were gonna fund some of these up, it I had us using fund balance because I knew this money was coming in. We're in essence, just moving it to C N R. But it just gives more control.
It's saving us, it, instead of putting in a general fund and having a public hearing, it's, it's just, we're basically having the right to do it.
Yeah.
Right now, so.
Correct.
I can imagine for the new memory, my head's spinning right now.
Sorry, I know I hit you with a lot.
Right, James. James like, man, what did I say? All right, so, um, I think that was a good explanation. Again, we're gonna use, long winded, right? Mary is just saying that, but that's my.
So, so I just have one question. So I I thought on those two purchases that we earmarked a couple hundred thousand dollars to maintain the industrial part down there. That's not in this.
You did, but in fairness, that's gonna come out of fund balance.
Exactly.
So that three hundred.
Even though we made a motion to take it, oh, no, we didn't make a motion to take it to C N R, we just made a motion to spend the money.
Yes, so that's still gonna come out of fund balance. So our fund balance won't grow by as much because of that and taking this money. In essence, we're just putting it in the other bucket of C N R.
In our mind, we were gonna fund it with the property sales, but it just came out of another bucket that's the, you know, for accountability, so.
So you said that you had been spending out of the fund balance, knowing this money was coming in. Does that mean we're now going to be short there?
So the H VAC project hasn't really started yet, the four million dollar project. So at some point, I'm gonna come to the board with, do you want to use fund balance? Do you want to use C N R? Because I think that the motion said to be funded through.
All of them both.
All of the above, fund balance. We have the ability to bond it, which we don't want to bond it because we should have the funds for it. Um, so in essence, at some point, we have to decide how we're gonna fund that. And when we get there to see what the fund balance currently is and what else is going on, we'll decide how much of fund balance we have to use or want to use to stay above the eighteen and how much of C N R we want to use.
What is that number over the eighteen? And what I'm saying, I'm sorry, is there's, there's a policy we made. We need to keep eighteen percent of our annual budget for a policy because the the bonding agent's like that. So what is our number of of over eighteen percent?
Let me see if I can have my, well, the schedule I did a lot of.
So eighteen percent of ninety four million is our budget. That's what we need to keep in there. But anything extra, we can spend without taking anything on our credit.
Um, so with having all that fall into fund balance, you're gonna, my estimate, last time I updated this, was we were gonna be at twenty two percent.
With this million, because that's where it was going.
With with take, yes, with that million in there.
Right.
Let's see if I can quick.
So now you're gonna bring it around.
So if these numbers, I haven't updated this in a while, if I took that million out, based on my calculation of the time, we'd be at twenty point seven three.
And what, it only moved like that?
And what is it in dollars? And but Bob's gonna test you here.
So the twenty twenty four budget was eighty nine, oh fifty one, and that is eighteen million, four sixty one. Would be in actual dollars in the fund balance.
Okay.
This is, I haven't updated this in a while, to be honest with you, and that is, um, has the two sixty five that E D C owns us that we haven't cleaned up yet that we should have.
So I'm sorry, Brad, I was thinking also in terms of dollars.
Yeah, I don't want the percentage. What is the dollar?
So I take the two sixty five out that, right now I show it at like eighteen seven, yeah, eighteen and a half million in dollars. But that's before we haven't done that H VAC improvements or anything like that.
So that means about two million dollars of excess fund balance. So that means about two million dollars of excess fund balance.
Uh.
I did the, I did the eighteen percent times ninety two, but maybe that's not right.
So you'd have to do. Um, it's one one eight, cause you gotta look at.
Again, just ballpark.
Yeah, so, yeah, so two million five, because you gotta base it on the twenty four budget.
Okay.
Cause the fund balance will get set at the end of twenty four.
That was so good, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but again.
Point, if, if we're gonna spend four and a half million on A Cs. It, a lot of it's coming out of C N R, because you only have two million in, in the.
Yeah, but looking at my possible twenty five adjustments from last time I did this, um, suing all this flows. I still have us assuming the other two properties sold and we kept it in fund balance and now I don't think we'd do that. We'd have. Um, we are still, we've got, we're spending two point four for HVAC, um, but we'd have to take out the Greenwood property. Um, we still should be, could be above eighteen, but it's, you get close to eighteen without touching the C N R at all.
Great, that's good.
Yeah, at what point does the Greenwood property reserve go away?
Kind of now.
Okay, so we got even more. We're, we're in an even stronger.
Yeah, but the Greenwood property in my, um, all my tests was always be funded. At four hundred thousand because the thought idea was use low set for the balance.
Right.
What is the Greenwood property?
Well, it's far ago.
Oh.
Okay, you call that the pipe true. I'm, I do, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't know, public, it, it doesn't look like we're getting it, is all I can probably.
There's, there's an offer on it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
An additional.
That's not us, you mean?
No, yeah.
There's an offer that's us and an offer that's.
That's higher than us. And I think they're taking the higher one.
Yeah, okay.
So, but we don't know what that dollar amount, because none of that is finalized. And nobody's saying, but we assume it's higher than ours.
Okay, so it looks like we won't be spending that money, so that money.
And that's what Bob's saying. It's only gonna get better.
Right, correct.
So how about I make a motion to take the revenue of one point, I'm sorry, one million, one hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. And move that, transfer that to our C N R account.
Yeah.
Let's look at your motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. I think we're good on discussion. I'll try everybody's mind, all in favor, sing the saying.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
I forgot, I still gotta talk more, I gotta controller report.
Yeah, you're using your minutes, using your words, too.
Mary said I have less than seven minutes, so.
Seems fair.
Thank you. Um, controller's report, um, cur- collection rate, top right corner of the revenue status. Current year, we're at fifty seven point three four, prior year, at this time, we were at fifty six nine. Um, which is good, we're always, it's usually at this point within a percentage point when I look back at the history of it. Um. So revenue side, interest through five months. Our interest budget was six fifty, we collected one million, one hundred and fifty five thousand. Um, and there's a couple smaller accounts that haven't been posted when I ran this, so it's probably closer to one point two. Um. Keep in mind that, as I mentioned earlier, ECS was cut by two hundred thousand after we set our budget, so we know. Interest is already made up at two hundred thousand dollar shortfall. Um, we didn't get the current, uh. Actually, we did get curmer revenue sharing, we didn't get it the year before. Um. So that's revenue side, everything's looking good right now. Um, we did get the first installment either in October, November of the ECS. Um, they break in, they base twenty five percent. Like four months into the year, another four months later, they paste twenty five percent and in May, I think they give us the other half. Um, that's the equal cost sharing, that is town revenue, but it's for school expenses, but it's if that are revenue side. Um. Expense wise, when, um, we've looked at it, um, everything's trending well. Even utilities doesn't look like a problem right now, but we know it's gonna be because some of those rate hikes didn't go into effect until. I think October one, November, September one, and the bills are just trailing. Um, and hope for a warm winter, so our natural gas isn't as high. Um. Uh, so that was on our expense side, there's nothing alarming. I did have an update. Last meeting, we talked about the bond refinancing. We find that handout. Um, I know I had sent some stuff out to the board about how we did, um, what it means in dollars for us. So to pay our debt, our new refinance debt for twenty five, we should come two hundred thousand dollars under budget in debt. I think it's gonna be about two oh seven. That's strictly because we refinanced and that's just the town side. The sewer department saved, I think another forty or fifty. I didn't print that out because you guys don't oversee that. Um, that's just in this year. Uh, I ran out the next three years. Uh, in twenty twenty six, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand or so in savings. Twenty twenty seven, a hundred and ten, twenty twenty eight, a hundred and ten. Uh, all in all, between the town and the sewer department, it's two million dollars in real savings, real dollars.
Over a fifteen year period?
Twenty, twenty.
Fantastic.
Um, the other piece, as it involves debt.
And that includes a seventy five, a cost of refinance.
Yeah, that's meta fees. Um, the school construction projects, Rockwell and Johnson. Uh, the state has finished the audit. The holdback from the state, uh, we're gonna receive one point three million dollars, we've received one point three million dollars. Um, still waiting on some of the final numbers on what. Spent versus bonded versus what we got back. Um. Right now, I think it's fair to say about, at least a million of that is gonna go to the debt service fund. So when I start building the budget for twenty six, um, when I have that final number. Uh, it might be time to update my debt service plan and look at, do we adjust it? Next year's calls for us using a hundred and eighty three thousand of that, what, before that million dollars. Um, to lower our debt budget, um, so we'll have to look at it, see what we wanna do with it.
So how far would you spread that out, just so it doesn't set us up for next year?
Kinda have to have a conversation of what we think's coming.
Yeah.
Because as much as. I don't wanna have the mill rate higher than it needs to be, I also don't. It was really nice in twenty five, we used six hundred thousand and the year before, I think we used like eight hundred thousand to take the debt spike out. So as much as it's nice to give the money back to the people immediately, it's also nice not to have if we have something coming, like. Roofs, three of the school roofs need to be redone in the next. The high school needs to be done sooner and then I think Barry and then. We're hoping that the middle school doesn't need to be done until the whole school will need something bigger. Um, but the high school roof estimate is five point five million dollars. Um, we would apply for the.
I thought it was three point nine.
Three point nine, Barry. The town portion would be if we got approved for the school construction grant.
I thought Barry was three point two and the high school is three nine.
Um, I can tell you actually, cut in my seven minutes though.
Yeah, well, I think you blew that anyway.
Wow, that's true, but I do.
You never finish strong, Brad, so you're gonna blow this up.
Uh, so the caper plan twenty five, twenty six. The Board of Education. High school roof repairs, five point five, Barry, three point one two, middle school, three point nine.
Well, I missed that.
Um. If you take the fifty five percent of it, it might, it's gotta be in that, like three range, so it's probably that's why that's. So.
Brad, is there anything else you'd like to add in your controller's report?
That's it.
I wanna geek out a little bit. Actually, we have a, a, a motion, we have a second.
James.
Thank you. Are all in favor on Brad's report, sing the saying.
Aye.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, there's a lot going on here and, and, and I know the new members in your heads have gotta be spinning. And it, it's gonna get better, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah, budget season's coming, it's gonna get a lot easier.
It's gonna get better for a couple of weeks, I was trying to say.
That's gonna get better, that's been so much work, sir.
I think there's other people wearing red shirts here, you know.
I like buttons, remember that year?
I like buttons, give me a button.
Oh, they were so mad at me. Anyway, alright, so I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for bearing with us.